All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, December 2, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. This evening for the invocation and pledge allegiance, we have Pastor Ken Simpson of Coin-Jock Baptist Church. Please call on us, sir, and we'll lead us in the pledge. Inocation. Thank you.
Our heavenly Father, we call on you this evening, thanking you for another day. Father, it was wonderful to wake up this morning and look out into your world and see the beauty of Currituck County all around us. Father, you created all of this beauty, and we give you glory and honor for what you've done. We come tonight asking that you will guide us through your Spirit's power to understand the workings of our government here, our local government. Pray your blessings upon the commissioners as they strive to seek the will of the people, and in so doing that, seek your will also. So just bless this evening's gathering. I pray that everything will be done as you give understanding in your word decently and in order, that good things might come to pass because of us gathering here this evening. Thank you for your love. Help us to share that love with others in the name of Jesus, and we praise you in his name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Normally, we would jump into the approval of the agenda, but we have a little bit different meeting this evening. We have to elect a new chair and new vice chair, so at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to the county manager, Mr. Stikelether.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to general statutes, the first meeting in December is the official business meeting for the Board of Commissioners, so at this time, we will elect a chairman. Welcome to receive any nominations for chairman at this time.
I make a motion to nominate Bob White for chairman of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners.
Hearing no other nominations, all those in favor of Bob White for chairman?
Aye.
All opposed? All, congratulations, Chairman White. I'm going to turn the meeting back over to you.
I don't know if that's a congratulations or not, but thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll be here for another year. And at this time, the next agenda item is election of the board vice chair. So I'll open the floor for a motion for a vice chairman. Jump at once.
I'll make the motion to nominate Mike Payton.
Thank you.
Second.
Selena, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, carries unanimously. Thank you all. And item D, approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes, additions, deletions this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I think we do need to add addition under, I'm not sure we need to add it, but the reappointments to some of the advisory boards of the sitting commissioners.
So that would be item, agenda item C, interne- business board appointments?
Yes, for of sitting commissioners to, of a change for the advisory board positions.
Would you like that to be 1A or item A?
We can make that, we can just make that 1A.
Okay. All right. I believe we need to remove item A under administrative reports, recognition, and presentation of advanced law enforcement certificates. All right. Anything else for the agenda this evening?
Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all. Next agenda item is public comment. All right. First person signed up this evening is Denise Fallon. Please come on up and if you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Denise Fallon, and I live at 111 Coral Court in Brandy. It's my new place. I sold my house, so it's kind of weird to say that.
Well, congratulations.
That's the first time in public, so there you go. I'm the principal of JP NAP Early College, so I wanted to come tonight just to tell you a little bit about our school in this public comment. We're getting ready to roll into our recruitment season, and so just wanted to share a little bit of information. I did provide some statistics for you there about our school. Again, JP NAP this year received an A grade from the state, so we're really excited about that. It's our fifth consecutive A. We also had a two-point jump in our ACT scores, which is a really big deal. Two points is a lot of hard work from students and staff, so really happy about that. I am really thrilled about our growth index, a 7.52, measures the growth of individual students as a group, and so I'm really excited about that. Anything above a two is a big deal for our growth index, so we're excited about that at JP NAP. We hope to admit about 85 incoming ninth graders this year, so I'll send out the official timeline for recruitment in December, so I want folks in the community to be on the lookout for that. We do accept, of course, students from both middle schools and folks that are homeschooled or private schooled here in Currituck County. So all of those students are welcome to apply, and I'll go through that recruitment process. We do have meetings at both middle schools for parents, and those kids that are homeschooled or private schooled are certainly free to attend those and get some information. We also often have folks just visit the school, just drop in at any time. I'll take you around for a tour and tell you a little bit about the great things that are going on at JP NAP Early College. Another thing I'm really thrilled about is last year, our graduating class, over 80% of our students graduated with an associate degree or certificate from COA, and that is phenomenal. When we, students apply to JP NAP, it's misinformation in the community that we only take the best and the brightest, the kids with the straight As, and that's not true. We don't even check grades. We don't even look at that until they're admitted, and we take them as they are, and we turn them into college students, and we're really excited about that. So thank you for letting me speak tonight. Does anybody have any questions about recruitment and what we do at JP NAP?
Well, I've just got a question about JP NAP, Ms. Fallon. I had heard, and maybe you can correct if this is not true or not, that I know the CTE program was successful with internship and some job placements, and I think that I heard that JP NAP might be looking at some type of program to help do some intern with some placements or something.
Well, we're excited about the idea of internships. If you look at our school improvement plan, I think I provided a copy of that, one of the goals that our staff and our students and our parents came up with is to work on that idea of internships. Because our students graduate with associate degrees, when they transfer to the four-year university, many of them transfer in as juniors, and that summer after your junior year, if you're in college, it's time to do an internship. Well, our theory is that some of our students could do those before they go. We've got connections with some businesses that do summer internships, so we're hoping to sort of build that program, not just within the CTE fields, but sort of globally, I guess, for all of our students.
Oh, that sounds good.
So that they're prepared for that when they go to the next level. I talk to them a lot about networking and building your network. Right now, kids, their network is their family and their friends, and they need to learn to build a network so that when they graduate, they can find a job.
That's good.
Yeah, so that's what we're looking to do.
Ms. Fallon, well, more than 85 students apply. So how do you narrow it down to the 85 you select?
Yeah, we frequently have more than 100 students apply, sometimes as many as 135, 140. We have a scoring rubric that we use. Of course, NAP is established on the premise to provide opportunities for students that don't traditionally end up on a four-year campus. So those students are minority students, low socioeconomic, at-risk students, which may be attendance or discipline in middle school. So that's our target demographic. We look for about 80% of our kids to fall in that demographic. Like I said, we have a scoring rubric. What does that look like? Well, grades aren't part of it, so we look to see, do they fit the demographic? We look to see what the teacher recommendations were. So students give us names of teachers that they want to be a recommender, and we really value that feedback from students. The number-one thing I think we're looking for in students is that drive to achieve, to have something more than what their parents had. Again, many of our students are the first-time college goer in the family, and so part of what we do is educating not just the student, but the family, to sort of change that mindset on what that college-going culture and family dynamic, because it is, it's a family journey, what that looks like. And so our rubric, again, teacher recommendations, we interview every student that applies, so that's just one part of it. And after we do all that, and if any of you know me, I used to be a high school math teacher, so I'm all about the numbers and the rubric, and is it valid, and what do we do, and is it going to end up, you know, with what we want? After all of that, we have a team that looks at the data, looks at what we're going to end up with, and we painstakingly go back over that. If there's somebody that they interview that they feel passionate about, we go back and we look at that, because we don't want one piece to be the determining factor, why you get in or why you don't. So it's a lot of work.
I just want to add, they do, I visit that school frequently through the Sheriff's Department, and Ms. Fallon and her staff does a phenomenal job. You have good kids that go there. They're very respectful. We had a lot of the kids, and I know they had, I believe they had a couple here at the county as well.
And I wanted to say thank you for that, allowing our students to do that job shadowing, our 10th graders. That means a lot.
That was really, we had a couple on my shift that rode with a couple of our officers, but they do a really, really good job on pairing these kids for the future. Just want to say, keep up the good work.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
As someone who was on the commissioners when NAP came into being, I supported it then, and a few years later, my granddaughter was in the second class that graduated.
Indeed.
And I told Mr. Bastin, who was the principal at that time, I said, it came to fruition what I thought it would be, and I'm very proud of what y'all turned out over there.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I am too. I'm so proud to be the principal there, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person on the agenda this evening is Mr. Don Williams.
Hello. My name is Don Williams. I live at 305 North Currituck Road. I think I want to pass my comments right now. I think I'm going to sit back and listen to what everybody has to say.
Okay.
And go from there. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'll need my glass for this one. Nathan Morales?
Yes, sir.
All right. Got it right. I hope, did I get it right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
My name is Nathan Morales. I live at 173 Baxter Lane with my wife and two children. I'd like to share with you our recent experiences relative to the windswept pines development, some of the impacts it's had on our household. When the original phase of windswept pines was developed, they dug massive stormwater ponds that were designed to limit the flow of water out of the neighborhood. This has substantially raised the standing water table in the surrounding area such that the standing water table resides just below our septic field. When it rains and the water starts to fill these ponds and they put pressure on the water table, it rises into our septic field and backflows into our septic tank. When it's really bad, water would come out of our septic tank. We've since spent thousands of dollars to put in check valves and pumps, and that's helped a considerable amount. The windswept pines drainage, when it comes to its full capacity, outlets under Baxter Road in three 36-inch pipes. It travels down a privately-owned, privately-maintained farm ditch, and subsequently is designed to all exit through a single 36-inch pipe that's set at an improper elevation into a swamp that flows out into the Shingle Creek. What it's forcing our house to do is act as temporary stormwater holding. When the water starts coming out, three pipes puts more water into the ditch than a single pipe can handle, especially when that single pipe's set at the wrong elevation. And so water backs up onto our property such that our neighbors are concerned for us in times of big rain, because they can see the water getting closer and closer and closer to our home. So I would like to urge you guys to reconsider some of the requirements for these new developments. I've had extensive conversations with the city engineer and, or the county engineer and some of the people on the planning commission, and they have suggested that I come and ask you guys to require a downstream water analysis and that for any of these new developments, along with the improvement of downstream situations, so that it doesn't impact houses like we have found ourselves, the victim of really just storing thousands of gallons of somebody else's water. It backfeeds under the road and comes to rest on our property. I appreciate y'all here in my house.
Thank you for your time, sir. Appreciate you coming up. Paul, you look like you've got something on your mind.
How, okay, the engineering says it's retained and then it's metered out no faster than would normally occur. You know, as far as downstream, you know, that's going to be the same typically whether or not there was a development there or not, so I'm kind of curious, if they're experiencing these issues, what's Eric saying as far as, is it in fact a cause by the subdivision? Or the subdivision design? Or what are we doing to ensure that the design was built per spec and per the engineering that was associated with that development?
Well, I recall two or three years ago, when this came for the board, I recall this gentleman having concerns back then, and I thought we had, because it brought up, we talked about the crushed culverts, his issues where it was drained into, and I thought, I can't remember, that we were going to have staff look into that.
They were, and that I can say, I, you know, I'm not on that team, but you and I were on a conversation that was probably the better part of an hour with Mr. Weatherly, and it, it's a privately-owned ditch, and it's a privately-owned pipe that it all flows through, but all of the houses on Baxter Lane have 60-inch culvert pipes, and the engineering required that they have 60-inch culvert pipes. Three 36-inch culvert pipes that outlet the water from the neighborhood is the engineering equivalent of one 60-inch pipe, and they all rely on a single 36-inch pipe. The people that live in the very end of Baxter Lane, my understanding is that they own the pipe as a small community. They paid to put in a new pipe, but it's 36 inches. And I have pictures that I took on the road where you can see 60-inch pipes being completely overwhelmed by water in a big storm event, and it all comes through a single pipe that's 24 inches smaller than the 60-inch pipes, and it's not even flowing at capacity at that point. And so it's, and not for that, not for nothing, but every time they develop another small section of that, they're pulling water from a place that it would otherwise flow towards Shingle Landing and elevating it so that it flows back towards Kerituck Highway and crosses under Baxter Lane up by the railroad tracks. And I'm not entirely sure, because I wasn't here when they, when they, when they did part of this, but water from the west side of Kerituck Highway flows into that neighborhood and then under Baxter Lane, and that never happened before either. It all went through a ditch that was behind the property that they developed. And so you've got hundreds of thousands of gallons of water trying to outlet through a single 36-inch pipe. It would be the equivalent of us cutting the top off of a two-liter Coke bottle and setting it in the middle, and everybody pour two more bottles into it and be surprised that two bottles flow into one bottle faster than one bottle can let it out. But it picks up another 100 or so acres' worth of water before it hits that pipe, and it's killing us. We've spent thousands of dollars that we could otherwise have done a variety of home improvements with to keep a septic tank working that was engineered. It wasn't that they just guessed. Our house is built in the late '90s. The county was requiring engineering for all of these things at that time, but they've manipulated the standing water table adjacent to our home to the point that if I go into the back of our property with an excavator, which I happen to own and dig a hole, water will rise up out of the sand layer to within 18 inches of the top of the ground. That's all around our septic field.
Well, that's not necessarily unique to your lot.
I don't disagree.
Because I will tell you, same thing, you know, back on site, mine went to the surface level. So there's a hydrology associated with this that, I get it, but that goes back to the, if the system is performing the way, and an issue that I've had is not the single storm event, because the reality is, if we get a big enough storm event, I don't care what your outflow system looks like. Typically, it's going to be overwhelmed, and you're going to see some delevel of flooding.
Agreed.
I'll take you down East Ridge Road anytime you want to. My problem is, if we get successive storms, right, we get one today, we get one in three days, that standing waste, or stormwater retention philosophy, mathematical model or whatever, is all fine and dandy for an isolated event, but it's these successive storms that we're, we're not capturing at all. And so, but, but the core issue is, is it performing to the way it was engineered? And we, and we need to know, we need an answer on it.
Well, the answer to that is yes, but they didn't engineer past the point of where it outletted. They aren't required to.
Well, they can't, they can't. You can't require them to engineer something they can't control.
Right.
That's...
So then we can allow them to essentially make whoever's property lay between them and the problem just...
Between them and the problem is what their retention aspect is supposed to be preventing.
Right. Supposed to present that.
Your situation is what the design, the stormwater design is supposed to prevent.
Okay.
Assuming, and I'm taking you at your word, assuming that in fact that is causing that.
Okay.
It's, it's, you're in the middle, that's not supposed to be impacted per the modeling.
Well...
So if you are, then it means either the modeling's wrong, or the engineering's wrong, or something else is wrong.
When they put, prior to putting the three 36-inch pipes in, were you having issues then? We were not.
So it's this additional water flow that's...
Well, it's, it's, those three 36-inch pipes have, have essentially gobbled up all of the water flow that the ditch is capable of handling, and when it stops being able to handle it, it backfeeds under the road and rests on our property. That's not, water's never designed in the, in, from what I can tell, and I'm not an engineer, but from what I can tell, it was never designed for water to flow to the north side of Baxter Road from the south side of Baxter Road.
Isn't this where the water was coming in the back of the lot?
Yes.
So that's still not...
A problem, right.
Fixed.
Right.
Got it.
So, and, and Mr. Weatherly, in our conversations, and I don't know if you're allowed to speak or not, but agreed 100% that, you know, the, the big issue is that you've created a funnel. You have a single 36-inch pipe trying to keep up with three 36-inch pipes' capacity.
That's, believe it or not, that's probably, yes, that is the, that is the issue, but the reality is, the water was always there in the first part, trying to get through that 36-inch culvert.
No. No, 100% not, because they rerouted the water to Baxter Lane.
So that's the water that is coming in the back of the lot.
Right. There was some rerouting from the north side of...
Was that the DOT culvert, too?
We had a big discussion about that.
Yeah, it goes into the DOT culvert, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we'll get on it.
Well, I think there's a couple of issues here for Ms., unfortunately for Mr. Morales, is that there is that privately-owned culvert there at the end of Baxter Lane extension that the property owners have recently put in. It was put in, not at the best elevation, and also there is the outlet that goes into what would become Shingle Landing Creek, but it is a channelized ditch that our new stormwater technician has gone out and it's, it's got trees in it, it's got things that are needing to be, it needs to be cleaned out. There is a development that is proposed in that area along that, that slough there that we've requested that they clean that out in conjunction with the new development there at the end, but it's an issue that would need to be addressed, is that 36-inch culvert on that privately-owned...
If we know that that's an issue, then, then I'm going to see how we can, I mean, I know what you're saying, but how can we, if we know that flow's an issue because of the situation there, then, then how can we continue to let water be the part of the new developments?
Which is rerouting water to a stress system.
Yes, right.
That should not have...
So the challenge there, and I'm going to work a little bit off of information that I've, I have secondhand, because it occurred prior to me coming here, there was talk at one point of requiring developments to do downstream analysis and upstream analysis to make sure that the ditch systems could handle that. What occurred whenever that discussion happened or that rule was put into place is the design professionals could not get permission from private property owners to take measurements to be able to evaluate whether or not the ditches could or could not handle the flow. And so because of that, the requirement either was changed or was never put into place to require a downstream analysis to see if the ditch, because right now, all they engineer to is the property line, and once the water leaves the property line, they don't examine where it goes.
But see, that's not my problem. My problem is...
That's my problem.
No, no, no. It shouldn't have been your problem either. My problem is when we rerouted water and basically sent it back into a system that was already tapped.
Right.
In other words, it's one thing if I continue sending it downstream, the canal of the ditch, the swale, the slough, wherever it was going historically, because then that system is not going to see any more water than it's seeing today, right? We may retain it onto a development a little longer and then meter it out. I get that, but when we redirect water and send it into an area and into a direction that it was never going before, that's where I got a problem. Did, you catch my drift?
Yes, sir.
And I don't care, I mean, I do, but I don't care about downstream analysis. I just don't want to overburden or tax or send, you know, someone else's water down to places that it shouldn't have been going in the first place.
Well, I'm going to look to the planning director for a little help on this. I think that the way our rule reads is you can't have water leave at a higher rate, you know, but it doesn't say it has to leave at the same place.
Right.
And that's...
That's the crux of the problem.
Well, that's crucial, that we're relying on a private piece of property with a ditch that we have no control to clear and stack it, and then did we even, did we give any input at all when they were putting that culvert in, or how high or anything, and they just threw it away?
It was private.
It was private.
Yeah, they didn't have to ask us.
Well, I know that. And I believe that was the crushed one.
So...
And the way I understood it, it was a water line issue there that they couldn't go any deeper at the time without moving our water line, and it was, it was a...
There's a lot going on.
Well, no, it was a private, it was, you know, it was a private endeavor, and then it snowballed.
So my recommendation for staff to look at going forward is, if you're going to change where the outflow of the water occurs, you're going to provide a downstream analysis, and if you can't provide a downstream analysis, then...
You don't get to...
You're not going to get approved. Your stormwater's not going to get approved.
Making a note. Thank you.
I heard you snicker. Well, that was, that was Mr. Weatherly almost verbatim. I wrote it down as we talked. He said, you need to go to the city, or the county commissioners. I apologize, I don't, I don't come from a county, I come from a city. We need to come in here and thank you guys to, to require that downstream analysis, because it's simple math, and, and he said on our phone conversation that he told Mr. Bissell multiple times, this wouldn't work, and it was the day of or two days before they came to vote on this, that he finally agreed that it wasn't going to work. But he didn't come in here and tell you guys that. This is what we've got.
Okay.
But I do appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. I don't have anyone else signed up for public comment this evening. Would anyone else like to speak to public comment? All right. Seeing no one, I will close public comment. Next item on the agenda is the commissioner's report, and I'll kick it over to Commissioner Jarvis to start us off tonight.
Throwing me again.
Yeah, just change it up a little bit.
Two times in a row. Okay. So the Trillium Northern Region Advisory Board met Tuesday, November 12th, and one of the most interesting things that I have learned from that, happened at that meeting, where we were briefed by Teresa Beardsley of the Alamo Regional Health Services on vaping. And it was, the information was daunting, it was scary, about how many teens and pre-teens are being duped into this dangerous fad and this dangerous addiction. She reported that as of October 31st, 2019, 1,888 cases of vaping lung injuries have been reported nationwide, and 66 of those cases have happened in North Carolina. She also reported during her presentation that both the CDC and the FDA are working in conjunction with the states to research and better understand the issues and what's leading to these injuries so treatments and actions can be taken. And I encourage you to, if you have a teen or pre-teen, to talk to your children about it, because it is certainly scary, the information that she presented. They also, at this meeting, reported that since no budget has been reached at the state level, Department of Health and Human Services has suspended work on the Medicaid transformation, and Trillium has been assured that, and other stakeholders, that work on the tailored plans will not be impacted by this action, and that the timetable is still February. And I have been in communication with Samantha Hurd, the Director of DSS, about this issue. And the last thing is, I attended the Soil and Water Conservation Area 5 meeting that Chairman White also attended and spoke at on Thursday, November 14th, and I really enjoyed the meeting and the issues and potential solutions that face farmers regionally and in Currituck County. I grew up on a farm, so it's near and dear to my heart. And I would like to thank Harvey Roberts, Manley West, and William Powell for their work with this important endeavor. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to congratulate our athletic programs at the high school and middle school. They've had a pretty successful fall season, and hopefully the winter season and then the spring season will be likewise as successful. Since we won't have a second meeting, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And keep in mind the reason for the season, because without that thought in mind, it's just another day. It's not about presents, it's about family, it's about how we feel about each other and treat each other. And I often say that we should celebrate Christmas every day. So I wish everybody the best. And lastly, I attended the Big Curry Shuck on Saturday, and for those who didn't go, you missed a real treat if you like oysters. I lost count after 40, but it was a good meal and a good time, and it proves that we can do things like that in Currituck County and draw a lot of people, because the place was packed.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Record.
I'd like to also kind of ditto what Commissioner Etheridge said about the school sports. They did have successful in volleyball, football, and everything. Basketball game, I think tonight's the first high school basketball game we're here, but like I said, so go out and support the Knights. Operation Santa through DSS, there's multiple venues to donate to. There's a lot of kids in this county that don't get Christmas, and I know Commissioner Etheridge said it's not about the presents, but it is for the kids, the presents. And then Friday is the, and we hope the weather holds off, is the county Christmas parade at the extension by the YMCA, that area. Don't miss it. I get to volunteer all day Friday to help set it up. So, but yeah, like I said, the Christmas parade, the tree lighting's at 6:00. Our county manager got a live tree this year. Kudos to him on that one. And the parade starts at 7:00. So, like I said, make sure you can attend. Bring kids, bring grandkids, bring big kids, so, all right. And Merry Christmas to everybody, too. I know it's December 2nd, but this being the last meeting of the month.
Thank you. Commissioner Beaumont.
Yes, a couple of things. And there'll be more this evening, but as a byproduct of the Fire EMS Advisory Board, one of the things that came up with was adding two additional members to that board to represent citizens that live in the tax district that's paying for fire services, specifically Corolla, North Carolina, and Knott's Island. Both of those municipalities, or those areas have a fire tax, if you will, and we are looking for volunteers from those districts to serve on the Fire EMS Board. That's part of the, you're getting taxed, you might as well be represented. I would encourage those that are interested to please go online, get the advisory board, in fact, anybody interested in serving Currituck County, and as an advisory board member, please go online, fill out the application, send it in. LeAnn will be kind enough to send it to those that need to see it. And then, while there was only one meeting in November, I had the pleasure of attending the Veterans Day Celebration at Currituck County Veterans Day Park. It was, the weather was drop-dead gorgeous, and what a wonderful time. My thanks to the Boy Scouts for the services they provide, and a special shout out to Kelly's Dance Studio, who had, was it five, young ladies dressed in era outfits that performed to the Bugle Boy of Company B. That was probably the most enjoyable aspect of, I know Bobby Hennig probably doesn't want to hear that, because he did speak, but that was the most enjoyable aspect of the whole service. So, anyway. And then final shout out, we have a, veterans are asked to please register with Currituck County. We're looking to figure out how many veterans are actually in Currituck and use that as a tool to, you know, either solicit or look to additional services that we can help provide to Currituck County residents. Larry Lombardi is our point man on that, and in fact, is going to be on a conference call Monday, next week, next week, with Senator Tillis's office, to look at what the senator can help Currituck with relative to veterans. So, that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The commissioner's reports are a time to share information concerning the boards we serve on, meetings we attend, or information of interest to the public. Well, tonight, my report will be about a premiere I will be attending later on, and to congratulate one of Currituck County's own, Ashley Bassnight. Ms. Bassnight graduated from Currituck High School and Elissa City State University. She's a software engineer for Boeing and has her own business, Handmade Heaven, Haven, and after tonight, she'll be our TV star. Ashley will be on TV tonight on a show called Making It, which will be on the NBC channel at 10:00. Please tune in tonight and watch a local Currituck lady who's making it and certainly making all of us proud. And if you happen to be by the courthouse anytime in the next week, stop by the clerk's office, and the lady with the big smile, Debbie Bassnight, is her mother, and congratulate her, too. And again, that's tonight at 10:00 on NBC. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brennan.
Nothing to report on tonight, other than just wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy Merry Christmas and holidays. And I just want to thank the commissioners for a good, productive year working together in 2019. Look forward to working together in 2020 to keep this county moving in a positive direction, working hard for our citizens out there. So I want to thank the citizens of Currituck as well for a good 2019, and looking forward to the new year coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. And I too don't have much this evening. As Commissioner Jarvis reported on, we did attend the Soil and Water District meeting. I wasn't able to stay the whole time, I stayed several hours. That was a very great, a good meeting for me. I haven't, being from the city, I don't know much about soil and water conservation. And so I did a little reading up on it and having conversations. It was great. It opened my eyes to what goes on there, and it was just a great meeting, and picked up a few things out of that that we talked to the county manager about going forward. And that's it for me this evening. I'll turn it over to Mr. Stackler for the manager's report this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really just one item, just so that folks are aware, the clearing has begun on the Public Safety Building beside the COA Building. So if you go by there and you see a bunch of trees down, that's what that's for. We're pretty excited about that project. Hopefully have it online in the spring of 2021. Obviously, different departments will kind of phase in as time goes by, but I'm really excited for the great things that Currituck's got in store over the next year and into the future. So, that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is administrative reports, item B. Or is now A, Economic Development Report by Mr. Larry Lombardi, our Economic Development Director. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hopefully, everybody can hear me all right.
Yes, sir. We got you.
I'll put my glasses on so I know for sure. Just want to thank everybody having the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank the county manager, the opportunity to be here on a quarterly basis, just to update on some of the projects, some of the ongoings within the county from economic development perspective. I have a presentation here tonight. First part will be just on some typical numbers that you'd like to see, know what's going on as far as the county is concerned, and then I'll speak about some projects as well. All right. It worked. All right. So we'll do the numbers. Just from a population standpoint, and you look at the source that I'm using for these, the total county employment, based on, that's almost 50% of the people are employed here in the median household income. One thing about the county employment, when you look at the region, and I'm speaking of Hampton Roads region, as far as the worker participa, workforce participation, we are probably at the highest level, 50, I think it was 53% was the number, when you compare it against the other localities in our area, just north of us, which is pretty impressive. We've got a lot of stuff going on. And speaking of that, this is, again, just for the last quarter, that I'm giving this information with commercial permits and the potential tax value, and that's based on the information that we've received from the permits and so forth. They're not actually been assessed yet, so that number obviously will change. And as far as residential certificates of occupancy, just for this past quarter, or at least through July through October, we have registered 133 COs. And again, the, looking at the potential tax value, again, that's not where they've been assessed yet by our tax department. So if you wonder where those numbers are coming from, it's based on those COs. Workforce, as I mentioned, you think about it, we are a small county compared to the rest, but as far as the workforce, you know, we're ranked 18th, and the unemployment rate is 3.3%. It's well past the full employment, as economists would like to call it. So we're doing quite well here. And we've seen, it's a good thing on one hand, and on the other thing, because we're growing, trying to get subcontractors with some of these projects, it does make it difficult, and I'm sure some of you that are business owners face that issue as far as employment. But that's a good situation to have. All right. Now, before I get into project, the various highlights, and I broke it down by the different sections of the county, and it's really more for, most of you all know this, but for people that may be watching, you know, there's aspects to these projects that are in various different stages. And the biggest thing is qualifying the prospects, or developers, or interested parties. And that takes time. And also, the biggest thing is staying in touch with the individuals, because we're always, in our situation as an economic development, you're in competition not only with counties next to us, but across the state line, particularly the seven cities and the localities that are located up there, and across the state. And some of these projects are actually outside of the state, too, that we're competing with. So things just don't happen overnight. And so I just wanted to lay that out, when you take a look at some of these project highlights that I'm talking about, you know, patience rules the day. You really have to be patient, because there's so many things that go into these different projects. Some could be where they're just doing pre-development work, some could be where they're just doing a market study to see if it even makes sense. Others, it could be, they need to put their financing together before they go to the bank to actually make this project bankable. So all these factors go in there. There are investors. Sometimes they come and go, and have to get new investors. So the whole point I'm trying to make when I explain this, so the public would understand, these projects take quite a long time. For an example, the Licensed Plate Agency that just opened up a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Etheridge and Owen was there, and the owner said, you know, it was two years in the making, and that's something that I've been working with her for that long. And, you know, that project was well worth it. But this is what happens. These are the things, when you work on these projects, there's many things that come into place. So I just wanted to let you know that. And of course, the biggest thing is, and I didn't come up with this quote, but I'm going to give this gentleman, Dean Barber, who's a site selection consultant out of Dallas, who I've actually spoken with over the phone on a couple of different things, and he said, "Economic development does not happen in a vacuum. It happens because people decide to improve conditions on the ground that would warrant or attract capital investment." And I couldn't say it any better. So, with that said, let me go on to the projects, and, wait a minute, let's see. Oh, my system was set up differently. I'm not going to sit here. Let me click through them.
It's going.
Yeah, I'm done. Yeah, well, this is just for the southern. I know you all call it lower Currituck, but I'm going to use southern Currituck. And so, we know about Buffalo City, the, everything's been approved. Spoke to the owner the other day. The equipment that's coming in is coming in from Germany. It's probably not going to be here until next year sometime. Construction will probably start next year, will start next year, because he wants to get open for spring 2021. Then, I'm not going to touch on each one of these, but there are a lot of activity going on down in the southern part of it. There's some reuse of buildings, like the adult daycare, the former Barrier Island Welcome Center, as you all know. And that particular lady that's working on that project, she's already certified through the state to do this, and so now it's putting things together. She has an investor, actually, the person that's involved with also has the building there. So there's a lot of stuff going on. And then one of our other buildings that I'm talking about, repurposed building, you all know where it is, down at the, near the area storage, that new building that was built recently, and is no longer, it's empty at this point. But there is a great deal of interest in that particular building, and maybe repurposed for something totally different. So a lot of these things, I don't necessarily say who they are, only because of where we are in the discussions and in the negotiations, that these individuals or groups just don't want that information to be put out there. So let me go on to the next one. Now we're jumping up to mid-Currituck. And let me just get these clicked up here real quick for you. All right. To the left, well, depending on where you're looking at, but the BEI Maritime, I know you're all wondering, okay... you're all wondering, okay, you know, we were going through this purchase-sales agreement for over a year, year and a half. There's been announcements that were put in the paper, which we didn't have anything to do with that. That was the owners of that business that went through with all that information. But anyway, the status is, and Commissioner Beaumont's been involved with it from the beginning. We're looking at probably a contract purchase and sales agreement. I know County Attorney's been working hard on that one. We should have that first quarter of next year, and from that point, moving forward with purchasing the land. And again, they're, they're going through their due diligence from a financial standpoint. There's some investors involved, and there are certain things that the investors need to see before they put down any type of money for this project. You all know about Hardee's, that's moving along quite well. Over at the industrial park, you see some of these projects are in the industrial park. And you'll see later on in my, towards the end of my presentation, why we're getting a lot of visibility at the Commerce Park. So there are some number of things that are happening. Some of these are international companies, their anticipation of the offshore wind that's going to be occurring in Virginia, off the coast, and a lot of those suppliers, everything is all overseas. And for any type of project, when it gets to offshore wind, which is not even an industry in this country, but Virginia will be the first one where they've signed an agreement, Dominion Energy, exactly, they will be looking for places close to the port. And us being right next, right across the state line, and with our tax structure and so forth, it becomes very, very attractive. And this agricultural company is actually a company out of Colorado. I won't say exactly what they do, but they're looking at Virginia, and they're looking here in North Carolina. I think I may have mentioned that one to you at one point. So it's a timing with that particular company, because of the type of crop that's being grown and the processing that they do, and needs to be at a certain time of year. Jumping up to the northern part of Currituck, Moyac. Let me click through these. And you've probably seen about the Old Dollar General Store there is going to be an O'Reilly Auto Parts Store. Talked about the license plate agency. Wendy's, they're up there breaking ground, moving some pipes and things like that. So that should be open before Easter next year. There's also a couple other things going on. Pretty Ugly Distribution is the group that actually owns Big Ugly, a microbrewery in Chesapeake, and they're setting up a distribution site up near Southland. And eventually, they're looking to replicate what they're doing up in Chesapeake down here in Moyac, up in that area. And of course, there is some planning going on with the Moyac Commons Project. There's some land that was up for auction last year, earlier this year, was purchased by a local investor, and they're working on doing a build-to-suit type project on that land. And let's jump to, okay, mixed-use project. That's another one that's basically across the street. As I said, they're in pre-development. We'll let that one just sit there for a while, but it's an interesting project. It's a mix of office, retail, and potentially residential Currituck Station Projects. Now, what happened is, oh, I know what happened. Yeah. The format that I had it in didn't quite work in the format that we have here, so that's the reason why it came up different. The Currituck Station Project specifically, these are a number of things that have been going on for the last couple of years. And the reason why it's to be determined, because it's really going to, once everything gets passed, depending on the type of project and all the other things that are going on up in that area from an infrastructure standpoint, is going to drive when these things are going to happen. But they will happen. So it's not going to happen next year. It's not going to probably happen in 2021. I may see some groundbreaking maybe towards the end of that time, but it's still going to be a little while as far as that's concerned. Mr. Icke, I'm sorry, I didn't get, I know that you're good at doing the project names. So I hope you didn't mind, just kind of the way I did it with the icons this time.
We'll talk tomorrow.
Okay.
Staff meeting.
Yeah. So we jump across the pond here, over to up in Corolla. And again, these things that I've listed are not all the projects going on. There's a whole lot of other stuff going on that, depending on where they are, just wasn't at this point really to put it up there. But again, looking National Grocery Chain, there's activity going on there. There was one a few years ago that came to us, and unfortunately, the price per acre by the developer was not realistic to the market, so that didn't happen. But there's still other activity going on, and staying in touch with that particular developer. And then there's a few other things that are happening. This water transport business is a couple of veterans, and the same thing with the land transport business, that they're trying to get this off spring of next year. So we'll see how that goes. And the others that are anonymous, only because they're not ready at this point to announce what they want to do. I know what they're trying to do, but they didn't want anything to happen at this point. And just as a point of reference, you may have seen this, I think it was, is it Bow Back Delicious?
Bo Delicious.
Yeah, thank you. That's up in Monterey Plaza, is up for auction. December 11th is actually when that'll occur, so I'll be tracking that to see actually who's going to.
Are they auctioning off the actual property itself, or just the equipment?
The equipment and everything inside there, yeah.
Okay, so the space would stay in the.
Yeah, it's everything that's inside of there. Exactly, exactly. Yep. So that's it on the projects. But like I said, there's a whole lot more. And as I come up to you in front of every quarter, hopefully, there'll be, there will be updates, and there'll be new ones at it. There'll be some that'll probably drop off. But that's just the business of economic development. As far as marketing updates, just kind of let you know that I'm out there selling the county every which way that I can. And so the Currituck Station, obviously, is the highest priority, and we're almost to the end zone as far as that's, we're definitely in the red zone, so we're ready to go in for the score, hopefully, in the next few months. But where we are now with the pattern book that's been released, the proposed draft pattern book, and the draft UDO, there was a number of individuals, developers, and of course, the property owners, that were interested in what we have. And recently, we sent out emails to all the interested parties, probably was a total about 35 individuals, representing the whole gamut. So we're looking to get some response back, the feedback from developers and investors next week. And once we get that information, we're going to meet with them, either conference call or face-to-face next week with their input, and be able to bring that forward to the planning board, and then certainly put that all together. And then, once the board receives everything, you'll have a good idea of what, at least what people think that are out there, actually would make the investments in Currituck Station. Maple Commerce Park, as I mentioned earlier before, there's a lot of interest that's been going on. What I ended up doing is putting the park on LoopNet, which is owned by CoStar, which all, anybody in the real estate business looks at that type of listing. So we're getting tremendous amount of views. The fact that it's in an opportunity zone, and the only one that we have in the county, there are various investors, developers taking a look at that. And also, what I've been doing, fortunately, we have some talented people here in the county. Right now, I'm outsourcing the videography with Mike Martin and Alex Perry. Once he's up to stuff with his drone and feels comfortable, we'll be able to use his services. But we're trying to put together a marketing package with some of the businesses that are out there, some of the business owners, the testimonials of why they are coming to Currituck County, the growth that they see, the potential. So these are things that we're out there promoting the county as far as economic development is concerned. And we'll have more and more every month. There's a couple that are up there right now on ThinkCurrituck.com. If you look under the news section, you'll find some there. Or you go to YouTube and just do a Google search on Currituck County Economic Development, and you'll see a few of those videos that are up there. Oh, okay, I just jumped ahead about the video content. Why that's important, particularly people nowadays, when they're going, doing their searches, the best way to leave an impression, if people don't necessarily want to read or take the time to read things, the content, so if you can actually have interesting stories, personal interest stories of business owners, it's a great way through the video content to be able to do that. And these are just a couple-minute videos for people to take a look at. And of course, it gets shared across social media. It's even better. And you can see the license plate agency, we have that, Care-A-Lot, which is the pet supply store up in Moyac, Built to Last, which is another one. We just finished doing that one. We have a few more lined up that we're going to be doing once a month, and then be able to edit that information and put it up there. And it'll be on ThinkCurrituck.com and the YouTube channel. And that's about all I have for tonight. I thank you for your continued support. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any.
Questions for Mr. Larry? Thomas?
I used the license plate agency today.
I used the license plate agency today, matter of fact, saving me probably about two hours from having to ride to Elizabeth City. So thank you, Larry.
And actually, Allison, in the video, mentioned that exactly, that it would take that long for people to go, and it saves time. But thank you.
Less than 10 minutes.
Beautiful. Awesome. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Anything further? Larry, thank you for your early hard work. We appreciate it.
Chairman.
And remember, call Larry.
Call Larry.
Call twice. All right. Public hearing is up next, item A, PB 19-26, Nutrien Ag Solutions text amendment, request to amend Chapter 4 and Chapter 10 of the UDO to allow distribution of agronomic products in the agricultural, limited business, general business, light industrial, and heavy industrial zoning districts.
Mr. Chairman, I need to ask the county attorney a question.
Fire away, sir.
Since I'm a client of theirs, the family form, should I recuse myself from this action tonight?
I don't think just because you are a client or customer, that that would be a basis to recuse yourself.
This is county-wide. It would be a county-wide change, right?
Correct.
If we adopted it.
And I wanted to also disclose that our family owns the land around all of the property.
How is that? Well, I guess I'll start again with the general statutes provide that a commissioner shall vote on all matters that come before the board unless the matter directly impacts the financial status of the commissioner, or is an issue regarding the commissioner's character. This does not appear to meet those two elements, and so therefore, I would say, just like Commissioner Owen Etheridge, Commissioner Mary Etheridge does not have, or Kitty Etheridge does not have a conflict, and should participate in consideration of this matter.
Thank you, sir, for the clarity.
And I will say that I have not discussed this with Nutrien at all.
Well, of course, this is a legislative decision, so it would be fine if you had had full discussion with Nutrien.
Okay. Ms. War.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pardon my voice, and maybe it'll get me through this issue, this case before us. So Nutrien Ag Solutions is coming to, before the board, request a text amendment to address agronomic distribution hubs. And agronomic products include seeds, fertilizer, and soil and plant amendments products, so that we're all a little bit educated on that. The background information, the applicant currently does have an agronomic product distribution use located at 119 Central Lane in Shawboro. It is zoned general business, and they're wanting to construct a new building on a site for their products. The building will be located where some of the staging and vehicular use is already located, so this would not be an expansion of the use. Our UDO, the language currently only addresses agricultural product distribution hubs, and not this more specific agronomic products distribution hubs. So the proposed amendment before you, I'm sorry, the agronomic, the agricultural distribution hubs are allowed in ag, general business, limited business, heavy industrial, and light industrial zoning districts. And the distribution hub for agricultural products is defined as a place where farmers can deliver agricultural products for pickup by consumers or wholesalers, but not including a central place operated by a farm co-op, where farmers can deliver products for pickup by consumers. So when Nutrien came to the planning department and wanted to expand their business, we found out that we, it's essentially non-conforming use. It doesn't address the actual, what the activity that's going on on the property. So we thought their best route forward was a text amendment to specifically address agronomic products. So what's before you tonight, the amendment is going to amend Section 4.1, the summary use table. Under the commercial use classification, agricultural support services not directly related, and in that agricultural distribution hub for agricultural products, simply adding distribution hub for agricultural and agronomic products in that summary use table. So this would still be allowed. This would be allowed in the same places where we allow agricultural product distribution, that the ag, the general business, limited business, heavy industrial, and light industrial. It would also add the language in there, in the specific standards for agricultural distribution hubs, right there. Currently, all agricultural support services not directly related, so had direct access onto a railway. So we're adding the railway language, and a major arterial street, we're adding that specific language, or collector street. Also, this proposed text amendment will add, say, the specific standard for any new agronomic distribution hub, or an existing use where they're going to expand by more than 50%, they will need to meet our outdoor screening requirements. And that's what that language is there. That would be under, once again, 4.2, the use specific standards. This text amendment will also amend Chapter 10 of the definitions and measurements by adding distribution hub for agronomic products, where a place where agronomic products are available for pickup or delivery, and the definition of what agronomic products are, that they include seeds, fertilizer, soil, and plant amendments. So staff and the planning board did recommend approval of this text amendment. And in considering a text amendment to, this one does, once again, applies to the UDO and countywide, to all the ag, GB, limited business, H9, LI districts. But the policies of the 2006 Land Use Plan includes Policy ID 5, warehousing, storage, and distribution facilities shall have access to thorough fares, or adequate traffic carrying capacity shall be appropriately designed and visually buffered to the visibility of their location. Policy ED 1, new and expanding industries and businesses should be especially encouraged that, one, diversify the local economy, two, train and utilize a more highly skilled labor force, and three, are compatible with the environmental quality and natural amenity-based economy of Currituck. The request. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because it allows for continuation and expansion of an existing and necessary support service for agriculture in Currituck County. So once again, staff and the planning board recommend approval of this text amendment as submitted. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that the board may have about agronomic products in the UDO.
Any questions for Ms. LaCicero? Okay.
I have a comment.
Fire away, sir.
It's amazing that they've been doing this very thing on this piece of property since 1965.
It is.
And I think it was an oversight when the UDO was created, that it didn't capture that use.
It didn't capture the specific use, yes, I agree. I think it, the specificity of it, it was probably just a simple overlook, oversight.
All right. Anything otherwise cracks for the board? All right, thank you. Do we have the applicant here tonight, or someone? Would you like to come up and tell us something we don't know? If you would, please state your name, just so we have it for the record.
I'm Fenton Yur. I'm the location manager for Nutrien Ag Solutions at 119 Central Lane. Don't know, there's a whole lot I can tell somebody, the ones sitting on the board, about the place that we're at. I would just say that we have been operating there since, you said 1965. I think it probably even goes back further than that, Owen. But we've been trying to upgrade what we've been doing, and we're trying to make it more user-friendly and community-friendly, more pleasant to look at. If you look at the picture that's up on the screen, you see up in the corner right there, next to the agricultural land, the big warehouse, and right behind that, you see the pad of concrete with a lot of what looks like to be trailers, and it's actually container boxes. And they've been operating out of there for the last 20-plus years. And what we're proposing to do is to take those containers out and build a new warehouse there that would be more up-to-date, more pleasant to look at, to store seed for the local farmers. And I was kind of amazed when I come to the county and they said, well, that's general business, and you don't meet general business standards, and we got looking. Under the general business standards, if I'm correct, if we were going to build agricultural equipment dealership there, there would be no problem. There were several other things that agriculture-related if we were going to build, but it did not specifically allow for us to do warehouses of agronomic products. That's when the text amendment was put into place. I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can about it for you.
Questions from the board? That's it. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll open public comment. Mr. Yur, we had you signed up for that, but I'm guessing you've said your piece at this point? Okay. Would anyone else like to speak to this item tonight? If you see no one, I will close the public hearing and open the floor for a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 19-26 because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the 2006 Land Use Plan, including Policy ID 5, warehousing, storage, and distribution. Facilities should have access to thorough fares of adequate traffic carrying capacity, and shall be appropriately designed and/or visually buffered according to the visibility of their location. Policy ED 1, new and expanding industries and businesses should be especially encouraged that diversify the local economy, train and utilize a more highly skilled labor force, and are compatible with the environmental quality and natural amenity-based economy of Currituck County. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because it is already an existing and it is necessary to support service for agriculture.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If you're not, it carries unanimously. Thank you. Does anyone need a respite before we go into old business?
No.
Okay. Well, we'll take a brief five-minute recess then. Getting back into order. Next item on the agenda is old business. Item A, PB 19-21 Island Development Text Amendment. Guy Lunsford is requesting a text amendment to allow development on islands accessible only by boat. As I said, this is an old agenda item. We've had lots of discussion about it. And Mr. Stike Leather is going to give us a little refresher on that and where we stood at our last meeting.
Yes, sir. And we've got Tammy Glave with the planning department, who is here to help assist me if I get anything wrong. So jump in there, Tammy, if it runs off the rails.
Want to let her run with it?
Yeah, Tammy, go for it.
Okay, all right.
Go for it.
Since we brought her out tonight.
I'm good either way.
Okay.
As you've mentioned, you've heard this a few times before. It was tabled at your November 4 meeting. I'm sorry, yes. And then the Board of Commissioners had a work session on this as well, so you have talked about it a few times. The comments that I'll go over are the comments just that came from your work session. I won't start from the beginning and go through the whole amendment with you. The first addition is that no more than one single-family dwelling will be allowed on the island, and that accessory dwelling units would be prohibited. The second is that the single-family dwelling not exceed 4,000 square feet. I should be following along. I'm learning. The fifth one, what all of those words say is that the house would have to be sprinkled and have to meet the National Fire Protection Association guidelines. And it goes into specifics there, since this is such a unique situation. Finally, the addition of the transportation for county staff, think about your building inspector, your zoning officer, or other entities like KAMA and the Health Department. The owner of the home would be the one responsible for providing transportation for us, since we don't have a boat. The requirement for a mainland-side boat launch and parking area was removed. And that was just a refresher. This applies countywide, but just a refresher that the island we're talking about is a long point there. As a reminder, the technical review committee and the planning board recommended denial of the request, as it was not consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan. The first policy is PP 2, and that speaks to the availability of adequate public facilities, and that would include your firefighters, emergency medical services, et cetera. The second one spoke to the soils potentially being unsuitable, and I believe Ms. LaCicero put at your stations, since your work session, the island owner did do a site evaluation through the Health Department. They tested three different spots, and one of those spots was deemed suitable for, potentially suitable for septic system, provided that fill is brought in and some other amenities be added to the soil. So we will not be, you should not consider ES 1 in your motion. Finally, TRC and Planning Board recommended that the request was not reasonable and not in the public interest because of that lack of adequate public services. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. I apologize, I wasn't able to make that work session because I know that's in my district, but I was pretty ill that evening, and I haven't had a chance to read through this and go through this and ask questions, or even talk to my constituents who are still opposed to this, to go over some of the stuff that was outlined in the work session. So just a comment that I don't want to make, so I'm seeing this for the first time. So that's the only comment I wanted to make on that.
I do have a question for you, sir. You said your constituents are against it. What exactly are you hearing from them?
What I'm hearing from them is I'm hearing from a lot of the duck hunters that did not realize that there was consideration of having a text amendment done to make it more easily, or more easy for homes to be developed on an island from an individual who doesn't live in the county, and had made the comment that he just, he wants to sell it, so he's trying to find a way to make it easier to sell. And they said nobody else has ever come before in this timeframe wanting to do it, but the duck hunters, the people that own the property over there, Pine Island, and the people down in Waterlily, when they found out about it, I know they called at least one more commissioner. I don't know if they talked to any other ones yet, but they told me they were still opposed to it. And I said, this is the first I saw this, so.
I have a question for Ms. Glave. Tammy, the, all right, say this isn't, we're just going out on a limb, if this was approved or whatever, and they ended up building something on there. Did you say, like, who, I mean, like, the county, and I don't know if, I mean, as far as like owning a boat or whatever, I know we assist with the Sheriff's Department through Parks and Rec, and we have to take them out there sometimes, too. If they had, like, an inspection, say this was approved, and they had an inspection, did you say that the...
The developer or the builder...
Whoever the builder would be responsible for...
Be on them to provide the transportation. Yes, sir.
And I mean, that individual, I mean, if you carry somebody for something like that, I mean, would that, I mean, wouldn't that require, I think that would require somebody to have, like, a, to take somebody for commercial or whatever, which would be an inspection, they'd have to have, like, a captain's license or something like that, and all that kind of stuff, too, as well, to my knowledge.
I am not sure about that, but I know that has been expressed as a concern.
The only reason why, one of my kids has his captain's license, so that's the only reason why I'm saying that. You know, as far as to take some, no, 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 I'm not. No, I'm just saying, far as for hire, like, I mean, if they had to, because, I mean, like you said, I'm not...
Not for hire. You didn't...
Well, if they, I mean, it's commercial, if they had to go do an inspection.
You didn't hire, to, the, taking a building inspector for, you didn't hire, they didn't hire out to have someone take them over there. They're just giving them a ride. So it'd be, you know, if they picked them up because their car broke down, they wouldn't be hiring them, you know, before they called somebody else in the county. But I don't think that applies in a for-hire situation of this type. They're not, they're not hiring them to do anything.
The only thing that I know that would apply is that the county would require that they would name us as an additional insured on their liability.
Yeah, I was going to ask that, too. That was...
Yeah, because I would liken it to hunting guides. They don't have captain's licenses, and they hang people out.
And they are paid to take them out, right?
Chairman White, didn't we also at a work session talk about a timetable for this, too? I mean, we wouldn't expect a building inspector to go out on a day, say, like today.
I thought we couldn't do that.
That's correct.
We couldn't specify when it would happen.
No, you're not making it, again, we're...
Right.
But did, did we specify some, like, parameters about, I mean, I thought we talked about it at the work session, but...
It was discussed, but the chief building inspector helped me go through this as well, and he said, the general statute has changed. If you call for an inspection, they have two days to provide that inspection.
I was going to bring that up, too.
The sound is froze over with ice or whatever. You got two days.
Bill, yeah, because Bill Noon, I spoke to him about that. He made that same comment where, and it's basically, like you said, it's a general statute by law.
But that can be no different than roads covered in ice and snow, or flooded, or whatever, so...
But we do have machinery to clear the roads. Extenuating circumstances can be...
Correct.
Yeah, but what if the sound was frozen over for eight days? I mean, I am just...
You don't have icebreakers, so you're right.
Just so that you guys are, just so the board understands that statute, what it does, what it also did is create a pool of inspectors that are state-paid. And so if the county cannot get to an inspection within two days, the consequence of that is that the builder can request one of these state inspectors, and then the cost of that is then charged back to the county. It's not a lot of cost, but that's, that's basically the way that the General Assembly decided to write that statute.
Could actually take them over in a helicopter.
Right. Well, the problem is the builder's not getting to the island either ostensibly, right? If you can't get an inspector there, they can't get their crews there to work, unless they're going over on...
A helicopter.
Right, hitting that path. Anyway.
Yeah. Well, and I will say, too, that I did talk to the fire chief, too, about this, too, in Lower Currituck, and he didn't like the idea as well, either, as far as fire and support and all that, even though I know we're redressing it, he still didn't like that.
We've had discussions on this board ever since I've been a member of this board, and something that keeps getting waved around is property rights, and property rights, and property rights. And I think we have the disclosures that are on there that basically say, if you want to build on an island, and you want to jump through the hoops that are necessary with that, including informing your potential land purchasers that, oh, by the way, if your house catches fire, and I would argue, us sprinkling that house, I think is probably, goes a far sight further in helping prevent a house burning down and loss of life than, you know, some of the other structures that we have in this county that don't have that benefit. And that if you're willing to, if you're willing to do that, and the other thing I'd point out, you're not hurting your neighbor's property value by doing this. This is something that, you know, in a free society, that we get to do. And so, you know, we've talked about property rights in the past, and this is a classic example of, you want to live on an island, you understand what you're getting into, it's not like you woke up on the island, you know, typically, you got there somehow. And you know what?
Well...
God bless you.
Depending on what happened.
No.
Commissioner Bowman, I would agree to you, if a longtime resident here, you know, lived it, or that was a property, and they had structure, and they wanted to build on it, absolutely. But it seems like this board is getting ready to do a text amendment where an applicant specifically stated he's wanting to do this so he can sell his property and doesn't even live in the county.
Why should it matter that someone lives in the county? He owns property in this county, same as you and I, and everyone else in this board?
Let me finish my statement, then, sir, please.
Okay.
Okay, so we had other, we had other situations in this county, where we've had situations occur where a builder, applicant, or somebody, something didn't work out, and we were asked to do a text amendment to help them out, and we've denied those. So to me, I mean, this is my, I don't see any difference in this one. Prior to this, if it wasn't to help sell a piece of property, I doubt we'd even be hearing this tonight.
Do you think in those instances, there was an alternative use for that property?
There could have been. Don't know for sure, but there could have been.
What's the alternative use of this? He's paying taxes on a useless piece of property.
That's why his chief said he's trying to get out from underneath it, and he needs our help to do that. And he made that statement.
And I would also remind the board that when he purchased this property, it was being sold as something that was developable, so...
Oh, they can still build on it, but they got to meet the current UDO requirement.
No, they can't.
They can't build on it.
Then they can't build on it, then.
Okay. Well, that's why the UDO, we change it.
To answer, so you brought up duck hunting, and I get that, that's a big, big deal in this county, and I myself, I'm not a hunter. So I asked Mr. Stike Leather to take a brief gander at that and kind of explain for us that don't duck hunt, what the ramifications are. If we approve this tonight, what does that mean? What is the potential changes?
So this is quite possibly the most dangerous ground I've walked on as your county manager.
Yes, it is.
So I'm going to try to get this right, and if I don't, somebody call me tomorrow and inform me how I got it wrong. So there are different kinds of blinds that the game commission in Currituck County licenses. There are float blinds, or boats that you conceal and move to different points. There are bush blinds, which are built out into the water and are camouflaged, and there are point blinds, which are actually built over the water or right up on the land inside a private property. Bush blinds and float blinds all are given through, basically, a lottery system. There's a set number of them, and they come open every year, a certain number do, you can put in an application, they draw a number or a name out of a hat or a squirrel cage, and they, I think that's actually what it is. And so they, and so they award them based on that. Point blinds, however, and I'm reading directly from the website for the game commission, point blinds can be applied for at any time, subject to the meeting schedule of the Currituck County Game Commission. An applicant for a point blind must own the property on which the blind is located or submit proof of permission and writing from the owner. Before a license will be issued for a new point blind, the required distance must be established between the proposed location and any other point blinds, bush blinds, rest areas, and designated float blind areas.
So, in short, if someone were to apply for a blind, and there's already a blind out in the water...
That was too close.
...that's within that setback, they cannot put a blind in that position.
That's the way that I read it. Now, like I said, I'm not on the game commission, but that's how I read it.
But there's flight patterns, too.
So, 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 yes, they still have to meet the setback requirements. The difference, I believe, is that, from the way I read it, there's a set number of bush blinds. If you own land, you could put a point blind there as long as you can meet the requirements. Having said all of that, that is not dependent on a home on the property or not, so if you own...
Right, the property could have one now. Mr. Lunsford could go out and apply for one tomorrow.
If he could meet the setbacks.
Right.
That's, yes, I believe so. So that's the best I'm going to do with... That's, yes, I believe so. So, that's the best I'm gonna do with duck blind rules in Currituck County, and...
I think it's an important discussion, because it is such a part of our county.
It is, it is.
It is, and, and, and when I talked to him, it wasn't about the blinds, but that is the point you're at.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, didn't we also discuss, like, issues concerning rentals? This is a rental property, Airbnb, RBO, BBO?
Something like that.
Yeah. Did, did we not?
We did touch on that.
VRBO, whatever it is, virtual rent bond?
Airbnb.
You cannot, you can't control it.
You can't control it, right. But we would open the door to that, type of activity to occur there.
You know, I mean, we, if we opened the door, like she said, to something like that, would it, and I'm not saying Mr. Lunsford, or whoever he sold it to, but say you have a wealthy family from New York, and then they have 24 college kids with a, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of what-if scenarios, where then they need law enforcement, as well as EMS, from a fight, or somebody from some kind of alcohol impairment, having some major medical, I mean, like I said, that, that's my only thing, is, is the public safety part of it. But I get the property rights, where you've said, you know what you're getting into. It's not like you were thrown on that island, or washed up on it. You bought it.
So, Commissioner Payment, I, I, I take your point that we have, in the past, been asked to make text amendments to help someone out. But the fact that this gentleman is not a resident of the county, I don't think should weigh on this board's decision whatsoever. He's paying taxes, just like everybody else.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also offer, I don't necessarily agree that we're, quote-unquote, "helping" this gentleman out. I think we're looking at a resource within the county, which is several islands, not all of them, that can be developed. But I think that they, you know, there's many aspects of, Lord knows, I'd like to go off to an island and, and take a vacation where, you know, time away from the house, and, and I can appreciate, you know, the ability to do that. And, and I get it, you know. I, I don't see this county in a position to guarantee any single resident in this county that our firefighting will get there and save your house from burning down, that our law enforcement will get there in time to prevent anybody from getting hurt. And that's just the reality of a free society. You know, they're gonna go about it with full disclosure, we've, I believe, taken adequate steps to ensure anybody that buys the land, anyone that develops on the land is aware of their, of, you know, the fact that they're on their own. And, you know, we're all, I would hope, adults, and, you know, if they go in it with eyes wide open, then it is what it is.
My only concern is, as a rental, that, I have no concerns about the way it's written for a property owner, property rights. My concern is as a rental, and...
I will tell you...
And I think that's, I think that's a concern of staff.
Agreed. But I will tell you that there are houses in the four-wheel-drive beach area, that if they catch fire, and they're fully loaded, like, they're capable of, not 4,000 square feet, this is large houses.
That's true.
That it is far more dangerous as to what they're looking at, as to what we could potentially see here. And, and we can't, I would argue that this house could, a house built on an island like this will actually be radically safer, because we can require them to put enough, a sprinkler system, where in Carova, we cannot require them to do that. And, and as any firefighter will tell you, the sooner you can put water on the flame...
The better, right.
...the quicker it's gonna go out, the less water you're gonna need, and the greater the chance of saving life. Absolutely.
And I also think if somebody's gonna rent an island, house that's 44,000 square feet, first of all, they're not, hopefully, gonna have 20 college kids out there fighting. But if I'm gonna rent an island, I'm gonna be aware, just like I had a friend from Michigan that rented down at Carova Beach. She says she never realized she had to take all of her groceries with her, and there was nothing to do. I think when people see an island, they're gonna realize that, you know, there's no services there.
Dominos.
There, yeah, it's an island.
Well, the only I just wanted to express to the board, being the representative of that district in that area, what the concerns were expressed to me to bring to this board, that their concerns, and how they wanted me to express their concerns to this board. So, whatever this, whatever the vote turns out, at least they'll know that I represented them as their wishes.
That's why I asked you to clarify that, you know, I think it is important, we hear, hear the citizens' concerns on certain, because it is a county-wide issue, and it's not necessarily gonna affect just, it's gonna affect every island in the sound that has a potential for development, or potential for a blind to, to occur on this island. So... All right, seems like we've run out of discussion at this point in time. Any further questions for staff? All right, we'll open the floor for a motion.
Can I ask one more thing? Was there something, we asked it last time, and I remember the county attorney said, was there anything that, like, person A sells to person B, is there, there's no waiver that, that somebody could sign that they don't require, could hold somebody responsible for emergency services or anything like that? You can't waive, I know we, we had touched on that.
No, I don't think so, and there'd be no way practically for the county to be able to enforce any such requirement. So, I think the best that you have to offer the potential buyer property is a requirement that there be placed upon the plat, the statement that there are no county services available to, or will be provided to this island, or this property.
Just one other statement. I guess that's the hard part that I struggle with, is that the applicant knew this when he went into the purchase of the property. So, that, that it wasn't allowed at that time.
I didn't think he knew it when he went into there.
Well, he's, he said, I thought he told the board that he was, they were trying to negotiate a text amendment at that time.
Right, they were working through a text amendment.
Yes, but it wasn't approved back then.
He bought in, right, under the assumption that, but again, it doesn't matter what, what happened to him, the question before the board is, the situation brought this to light, and it happens all the time. We make changes because something affects someone, and they come to us for a text amendment to make a change on that item. And so, Mr. Lunsford's situation brought something to light, and so, the question before the board is, do we want to allow people to live on a remote island if they want to? And, and for me personally, that is what made America great, is, that's part of it, was the westward expansion, and people willing to do those things, and that is part of Americana, and what makes us who we are, as Americans. And so, it's just a bigger question, really, of, do we want this for our county or not? So, we'd like to put forward a motion on this item this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve PB 1921 Island Development Text Amendment with the language as reflected in the most recent version as presented by Ms. Glave this evening.
Any further additions to that? You good with it? Okay. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Any further discussion from the board?
Just for clarification, Ike, do they need to go over the land use policies that it's consistent with, and that it's reasonable in the public interest?
Do you need to make sure that, that, that we include in the motion the consistency statement? Yes.
Okay.
So, I'll amend my motion.
Mr., do we need to withdraw? One second.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
To amend my motion to state, I move to approve PB 1921 Island Development Text Amendment, because the rest, the request is consistent with the land use plan. Is that adequate, Mr. McCree?
I, I, I think it, you should properly, not necessarily read the entirety of the policy, but I would suggest that you include in your motion the identification of the policy number and its title.
How about, yes, one?
Okay, so, policy NN4, and the request is reasonable in the public interest, because as a core value of being an American citizen, we have the right to property rights.
So long as the reason is stated, no court may review...
What's that?
The, the reason.
Which one?
Apparently, we have more discussions.
Okay. And it will be, in the original, it will be the original developers' responsibility to inform all future homeowners, renters, visitors, et cetera, that emergency services, fire and rescue, law enforcement, et cetera, will not be available to the island.
And you said NN4, did you, did you mean policy H Hotel November 4?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
What did I say?
Okay. Everybody got all that motion?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you all for some, some great discussion this evening on that agenda item.
I consider review to make.
I have to.
Right, a two, no, and no. All right. Mr. Lunsford, you're all done, sir. Okay. Moving on to the agenda, new business, item A, ordinance amending chapter 2, article 3, division 3, Fire and Emergency Medical Services EMS Advisory Board, to provide one resident appointment from the Knott's Island, and one resident appointment from Corolla, to increase the membership on the Fire and EMS Board from five to seven.
As recommended by the Fire and Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board, and stated by the chairman in the title, this ordinance before you will increase the Fire and Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board, or FEAB, from five to seven members, as set out in section 2-121, which is line 22 on page one of the proposed ordinance. Further, at line 26 on that same page, the ordinance would be amended to provide that one of those additional two persons would be a resident of Knott's Island, and one, a resident of Corolla. Going on to the next page, section 2-128, at line 29 and 30, the ordinance would further be amended to provide that rather than meeting once quarterly, the FEAB would hold monthly meetings. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. McCree? I'll open the floor for a motion.
I would like to add consideration of one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Since we're going to a seven-member board, each commissioner being responsible for an event, it's sort of like consensus.
The prob, there's a problem with that.
Fire districts are gonna have to...
Because, because Knott's Island and Corolla are in the same commissioner district. And the chief, the chief is a fixed member of the board, and so...
Or assign a point of each commissioner, instead of by district.
Then you're gonna have more.
Yeah, but one of them is already the chief, and so, that's gonna...
You'd have eight.
Yeah, that makeup is a little different.
The five, assign the two at large, just don't get to assign anybody.
Right.
And then you have a commissioner. Now you have a nine-member board.
Right. It's, I think, in this board, in this particular board's case, it just doesn't, it just can't really...
And, and the other thing that I would bring out is, when we did the...
Consensus appointments, yeah.
That, that's fine. When we did the VFIS survey, one of the things that they, they brought up during that survey was that they had troubles with the seven-member board the way it was structured at the time, because of trying to get issues resolved.
A consensus, like you said.
Yeah, there'll be consensus.
Consensus.
Yeah.
Okay. Ike, does that present any problems with the language, the way it's written?
Do we need to add the, by consensus in there?
No.
Or does, does it matter? Okay.
Okay. All right, then, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance change as brought forward by the county's attorney.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, carries unanimously. Item B, ordinance of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners amending chapter 9 of the County Code of Ordinances by adding article 6, Alarm Systems, sections 1 through 8, regarding issuance of notice of violation, and to make a technical correction. And I had to think about a VI, it's been a while since I've done the language.
Mr. Chairman, this also comes to the board from recommendations of the Fire and Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board, FEAB, with the concern that there, there are instances in which false alarms are occurring within the county, which is requiring response of vital resources, whether it be law enforcement or fire. And so, this ordinance will prohibit and penalize fire, false alarms that occur more than two times within an established time period. So, first, section 9-100 of the new ordinance, on page one, beginning at line 23, sets out the various definitions of certain words that are used throughout the ordinance. Section 9-101, on page two, beginning at line 23, provides for the duties of, of an alarm user, which includes, they must maintain the premises and alarm system in a manner that will reduce or eliminate false alarms. They must make a solemn endeavor to respond, or cause a representative to respond to the alarm system's location within 30 minutes, when notified by law enforcement or fire department to deactivate a malfunctioning system. And they may not manually activate an alarm for any reason other than occurrence of an event that the alarm system was intended to report, or for them to perform routine maintenance. Continuing on, at section 9-102, beginning at line 36 on page two of the proposed ordinance, it is then a violation of, of the ordinance to activate an alarm system for the purpose of summoning law enforcement, first of all, when no burglary, robbery, or other crime dangerous to life or property is being committed, or, secondly, for the purpose of summoning a fire department, when there is no fire event occurring or otherwise to cause a false alarm. It's a violation of the ordinance to install, maintain, or use an audible alarm, alarm system that can sound continually for more than 15 minutes. And it's a violation to install, maintain, or use an automatic dial protection device that reports, or causes to be reported, any recorded message to the county's communications center, the sheriff's department, or to a fire department. Section 9-103, beginning at line 10 on page three, provides for the enforcement of these provisions. It is deter, if, if it is determined that two or more false alarms within a 30-day period occur, that is deemed to be excessive and constitutes a public nuisance, enforceable by equitable action, which could be the county seeking an injunction from a court, and provides for a civil penalty for the second or more false alarms within that 30-day period of $250 civil penalty. The ordinance further provides that it is civil enforcement, it would not provide for criminal liability of someone who's found to be violating the ordinance. Section 9-104...
Mr. McCree?
Yes.
That language of two within 30 days, I'm not sure where that came from.
Well, that's a proposal in the ordinance. I mean, if, if there's some other language you would like, please...
The, the board had discussed a two within a 12-month period.
Okay. That's, that's, I mean, there's nothing magical, let's make, if that's what the board prefers.
Got it. But the board, the board had said two within 12 months.
Okay. Let's make a note of that, then, to make sure that that's modified, should the board...
Well, I mean, what if you, I mean, let me say this, and, and I respond to these, and Sergeant Capps, who's in the back, does as well. The library in Mayock, at Mayock Elementary School, in the month of November, we respond to probably 25 false alarms in the, at this, I mean, is that gonna throw the school in there, too, as well as the business?
Yes, it's, it's any, any alarm.
Any, okay. I mean, now...
Four loops, I get tons of them, four loops, four loops.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Now, let me ask you this, now, I mean, would there be, like, an exception, I mean, when we have a hurricane, or we have, I mean, like I said, because most time, when the, there's a major power outage, and then they come back on, I mean, and in Corolla, they had, like, 200 of them.
I don't think that's the intent of the nuisance.
That's, the intent, the intent is, we have fire crews rolling...
Oh, yeah.
...over and over and over, throughout the night, on what are, in essence, faulty smoke alarms.
Oh, yeah.
And so, you take an entire company out, that's an engine, that's an ambulance, that's, you know, typically, another piece of equipment.
Law enforcement, too, they were, we responded.
And then, the problem is, they get involved in troubleshooting what set it off.
And they're stuck there.
And, and so, that's hours out of, out of the loop.
So, is two in 12 months reasonable? Is that a nuisance, two within a year?
I mean, like you said, if you had a couple hurricanes...
I'm saying, should it be more, more frequent, right? If you've got somebody that's a nuisance, it's a trip in once a month?
I've had, I've had one address on four loop get paged out four times in one night for the same reason.
Right. Right.
That's a nuisance.
Right.
I don't know that two times in a year is a nuisance.
Maybe like, two times a quarter or something? I, well, it's gotta be, it, I would suggest it needs to be more than twice a month.
Um, I don't think we're ready to.
I.
I think this needs a little, we need some more discussion on this.
Two a year.
Because it, it seems to me, if you got somebody looping out, like he's saying, four times a night, that is a nuisance, and there's no, that's two within a year. Right, right.
No, that's not, I mean, that, I mean, you could have a, like you said, a nor'easter or something shut the power off.
Yeah, but that would be, that would be weather.
Invariably, what the problem is, are smoke detectors that are too old, that should have been removed and replaced.
Right.
Or batteries.
Right.
But normally it's smoke, it's, it's fire alarm, it's smoke systems that are obsolete, that are no, that are not functional.
Or people who don't know how to use their ADT systems.
And they hit the wrong, yeah.
The window rattles, and you got a sunstroke, that's it.
I mean, I, I, I think it's, it is, their nuisance is, trust me, I mean, we respond to them as well as the fire department, but I think two in a year is, I mean, that's a low number, that's.
Well, I don't think this is really.
I think the way it's written, in 30 days.
Two in 30 days? Right.
That's a nuisance.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think the way it's written sounds like it.
Okay.
If you have more.
I'm good. Okay.
And, and then, to, to respond to some concern about, like, a weather event or something unusual, there is in section 9-104, an appeals process, beginning at line 22 on page three, that allows for someone to appeal to the county manager or manager's designee, the determination that they're in violation of this ordinance, and then there's opportunity for a hearing, there's an appeal standard which would be applied by a hearing officer, considering someone's appeal. Part two of this ordinance is to make some technical corrections to section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances, which is the ordinance section that provides generally for penalties for persons violating county ordinances. What is noteworthy is, in several places in that section, somewhere over the years, the word town, a period, rather than the word county. So, as set forth before you in sections 1-8 F, G, I, and J, there is, there is the striking of the words town, replacing with the word county, striking of the word town treasurer, and the replacement of, of those words with county finance officer. And then lastly, there is at line 23 on page four, an amendment to provide that this false alarm ordinance is a type of ordinance for which a notice of violation is not first required, given someone 30 days to correct the violation prior to issuance of a citation, rather it would allow for the immediate issuance of a citation upon finding that they've violated the ordinance. Be glad to answer any other questions.
And then the only other thing that I would add is, is the fine that I think is listed in here is $250 for a false alarm, and as to the, what may be a question is, is that fair and reasonable? And I would suggest to the board that rolling the fire apparatus necessary to go, plus the, the manpower that is spent in doing that, that that is probably not even close, but it's, it's good enough.
Not even counting the volunteers that are spending their fuel when they're.
That's correct.
Right. Yeah, I think it's well within reason, the, it's, it's enough to make you think, I'm gonna get my stuff fixed, if it becomes a problem, so. Okay. Any more discussion?
So we're two a month?
As written. Okay. All right, well, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appro.
You're in there tonight.
I'm in that, I'm in the groove. Approve the ordinance of County Board of Commissioners amending chapter 9, the County Code of Ordinances by adding article 6, Alarm Systems, and section 1-8, regarding issuance of notices of violation, to make a technical correction.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item C, board appointments. Number one, Animal Services and Control Advisory Board.
I thought firstly.
Well, we got one A. So A would go under one, right?
Yes.
So, um, the, um, sorry, I misplaced my piece of paper here. There it is.
So we got one.
Um, so the, the boards and commissioners, I'm gonna go through the list, just so that you all are aware, and then you can vote on them as a group to approve them. For Commissioner Beaumont, we have the Albemarle Regional Planning Organization, Fire and EMS Advisory Board, and Veterans Advisory Board. For Commissioner Owen Etheridge, we have the Albemarle Regional Solid Waste Authority and the Albemarle Commission. For Commissioner Kitty Etheridge, we have the Senior Citizens Advisory Board and Social Services Board. For Selena Jar, for Commissioner Jarvis, we have the, an alternate for the Albemarle Regional Planning Organization, Trillium Health, and for the Juvenile Crime and Prevention Council, for Commissioner McCord, we have the Animal Services and Control Advisory Board, and the Recreation Advisory Board. For Vice Chairman Payton, we have the ABC Board, the Albemarle Regional Health Board, and the Local Emergency Planning Committee. And for Chairman White, we have the Tourism Advisory Board.
Thank you.
Move forward.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we'll do Animal Services and Control Advisory Board. And, um, where are these?
It's a consensus.
Consensus appointments?
I'll move these to Bar Hill and NSC, please, we reappoint them.
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Board of Adjustment. Let's see here. Uh-oh. All right, we have, uh, is there a consensus? We have, oh, I'm on the next one, sorry, gotta paste out one more.
I think we have.
Remind a Tom Mody for the Board of Adjustments.
Thank you.
And I think I'm just gonna have one of my, an alternate go to, to, as be the regular meetings, with Lynn Hicks.
Okay.
Should, should be a, come off, so that means we're gonna need an alternate event. That mean we have to fill another alternate.
One opening.
Opening for, yeah, okay.
I move that we approve both of the appointments.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Item three, Fire and EMS Advisory Board.
Okay. Robert Pevere is not on the fire. Bobby's not on there anymore.
That'd be another consensus.
Okay, Robert Pevere is not serving on the FEAB right now.
Okay. Then just leave him.
Um. So we're really just talking about Chief Melton tonight?
I'll move, we reappoint Chief Melton.
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you. Uh, number four, Game Commission. Mr. Beaumont, you have Mr. Rom. And Commissioner Etheridge, you have Mr. Old.
I will reappoint Mr. Old.
I as well would reappoint, uh, Mr. Rom.
Make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Planning Board. Uh, let's see, Mr. Owen, you have Juanita Kraus.
I would like to reappoint Juanita Kraus.
And Ms. Kitty, you have.
David, I'd like to reappoint him.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve both reappointments.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item six, Tourism Advisory Board. Let's see here. Were these not, yeah, okay, there, we got the names listed, sorry. All right, well, I'm gonna move to reappoint Mr. Cartwright.
I'll move to reappoint Doug Brenley.
Thank you.
And I'll move to reappoint Sharon Price. Sophie, I would like to reappoint.
You got Mr. Beasley?
I'd like to reappoint Mr. Beasley.
Great, he does a good job.
Move, they be approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. With that one, and the last one is Veteran Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, ah, never mind.
I move to reappoint Jennifer Coon.
All right.
And also, she's only a lady servant, and if there are other ladies in the county who are veterans, please contact somebody on the Veterans Advisory Board. They're looking for more ladies.
Thank you. I'll move to reappoint Mr. Smith.
And I'll move to reappoint Mr. Chet Moore.
Do we have a move for approval of the board?
I'll make a motion, we approve nominations.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item D, Consent Agenda.
Move forward.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Thank you. All right, this time I'll recess the regular Board of Commissioners meeting and open the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority, and the agenda item is budget amendments for the TDA. Mr. Stachler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the budget amendment before you tonight is the, is to take funds that were acquired when the Wellhead Preservation Trust was consolidated with the county, to the county government, and basically move those into the Government Construction Fund, which is where the historic Maritime Museum project lies. So that money will be used for that purpose.
Thank you. I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn these meetings?
So moved. Second.
Second? Thank you. Did you get that, Ms. Leanne?
Thanks, sir.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This time I'll open the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board, and the agenda item tonight is budget amendments as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the first budget amendment is, through the construction process of the, the new plan out there, we had to haul more sludge than we anticipated. This is just a budget amendment that moves some capital outlay money that we had left into contracted services to cover the cost of that sludge hauling.
Move forward.